Good evening, everyone. I'm John Rowe, Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, and this is the June 9, 2020, virtual meeting of the Portsmouth City Council. And we will start with a roll call, and I'll ask the city clerk to call the roll. Please indicate your presence by saying here. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Glover?
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Semus?
Here.
Mayor Rowe?
Here. Again, this is a virtual meeting of the Portsmouth City Council, and I am in the council chamber. My colleagues, the other members of council are in remote locations. And I have a protocol statement that I must read. All public bodies that meet virtually have to give this statement. In accordance with Governor Ralph Northam's Declaration of a State of Emergency due to the COVID-19 coronavirus, his executive order number 51, which he signed on March 12, 2020, and the local declaration of emergency ratified by the Portsmouth City Council, and due to the COVID-19 pandemic, which is continuing in the Commonwealth of Virginia, this meeting of the Portsmouth City Council is being held by video conference on the ninth day of June 2020 without a quorum present in the city council chamber in order for us to reduce the likely spread of the coronavirus. Each member of city council is participating from their home or some other remote location, and I'm in the city council chamber. This meeting is being held in accordance with Portsmouth City Ordinance 2020-21, and it's also being livestreamed on Facebook. Once the meeting is adjourned, it will be uploaded to the Internet. We last met on May 26, 2020, and that's the day that our nation learned of the death of George Floyd by a police officer in Minneapolis. His death has reawakened not only our nation, our state, our city, but also the whole world to the injustices of racism. We must change as a nation, as a state, and a city. We must all work together to eliminate all aspects of racism. As you know, today is Mr. Floyd's funeral service, and we, as a body, will observe a moment of silence as we remember George Floyd and his family. If you'll join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. We will follow the agenda as it was published, or is published. All of our votes will be oral. There'll be a roll call vote done by the clerk. We have our action items. We'll take a motion and a second. We'll follow our normal procedures of Robert rules and order. Our first item of business is the consideration of the approval of minutes. We have the minutes of a virtual regular meeting of May 26, 2020. So that we can put this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt?
May I move for adoption?
Second.
Yes, second. Madam Clerk, do we have a motion and a second?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any discussion of the motion? Here and now. We're ready for the question. Again, this will be a roll call oral vote. Your favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye, nay. Madam Clerk, call the vote, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Semus?
Aye.
Mayor Rowe?
Aye. And next, our presentations. And our first presentation is the Fiscal Year 2020 Quarterly Update. And Dr. Patton.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of city council, this evening we have two presentations. The first will be Mrs. Mimi Terry, Chief Financial Officer, who will present the third quarter financial update. Mrs. Terry joined the city team on March 16 at the onset of COVID-19. I am indeed excited to have Mrs. Terry as a part of the city's team, and in the coming weeks, as we come back together, each of you will be able to meet her. The second presentation this evening is Attorney Michael S.W. Lockaby with the firm of Guin, Waddell, Carroll, and Lockaby, whose specialty practice involves municipal broadband. He will provide a performance regarding the Portsmouth Municipal Broadband Network, PCBN, which is established within our city. The next steps for your consideration is the formation of a municipal broadband authority, which will permit the expansion of connectivity to our citizens, businesses, and our strategic economic development initiatives. This presentation will provide the necessary background information on the next steps for forming a municipal broadband authority for the City of Portsmouth if council so desires. We will begin with Mrs. Mimi Terry.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Ms. Terry, you have the floor.
Okay. Deborah was gonna...
Yeah.
To the Honorable Mayor, to the Honorable Vice Mayor, and to city council members and others, good evening. I am presenting... Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh. I am presenting the Quarterly Financial Update ending March 31, 2020. I would like to give you an overview of general fund revenues and expenditures for the third quarter. Next. It's not moving. Hold on a minute. It's on edit mode? Okay. That's good right there. Revenues ended at $148.7 million. Expenditures ended at $174.5 million. Revenues and expenditures are tracking as expected for the third quarter. There is one quarter left in fiscal year 20, which ends on June 30. I had a chart which would actually represent revenues and expenditures by category. Okay. There's also another chart that represents a two-year comparison of revenue versus budget to reflect the consistent pattern of revenues received for the past two years and tracking at 61%. The expenditure chart also represents a two-year comparison of expenditures versus budget to reflect the consistency of expenses for the past two years, and it's tracking at... They can't see your presentation. Oh. Do they know? No, they don't know yet. Just tell them you paused a moment for their presentation. Okay. I'm gonna pause for a moment while she uploads the presentation.
Your charts are off. Why don't you go ahead and start with your second slide, page 2.
Start with my introduction?
Yes.
Okay. To the Honorable Mayor, to the Honorable Vice Mayor, to the city council members, others, good evening. I am presenting the Quarterly Financial Update ending March 31, 2020. I would like to give you an overview of general fund revenues and expenditures for the third quarter. Revenues ended at $148.7 million. Expenditures ended at $174.5 million. Revenues and expenditures are tracking as expected for the third quarter. There is one quarter left in fiscal year 20, which ends on June 30, 2020. Next slide. This chart is the representation in portions of revenues and expenditures by category. Next slide. This chart before you represents a two-year comparison of revenues versus budget to reflect a consistent pattern of revenues received for the past two years, which are tracking at 61% under year 2020. Next slide, please. The expenditure chart before you represents a two-year comparison of expenditures versus budget to reflect the consistency of expenses for the past two years and are tracking at 70%. Next slide, please. Where are we now? The city has received $8 million in state funding for COVID-19, which can only be used for costs associated with the pandemic. Funds for this purpose must be used by December 31, 2020, and unused funds must be returned to the state. To date, the city has incurred costs associated with the pandemic, and those expenses will be offset by state funding. The city is on track for this time of year. Significant revenues will come in the last quarter and the months of July, August, and September affecting 2020. The city is expected to receive $16.5 million in personal property and roughly $25 million from real estate taxes, which are due by June 30, 2020. The state's portion of PPTRA, which is the Personal Property Tax Relief Act, is budgeted at $7.9 million, which the city will receive in installments after June 30. This concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Does any member of council have a question about this report? All right.
I have one question.
Is that the Vice Mayor?
Yes.
The chair recognizes Vice Mayor Lisa Lucas Burke.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. Ms. Terry, pleased to meet you. I'm looking forward to meeting you in person when we're able to gather again. But I have a question about the $8 million in state funding for COVID-19. I think we were allocated somewhere higher. Is this just the portion that was received so far? And is there additional funding that we are going to receive before the December 31 deadline?
I can speak to that. I can speak to that.
I don't know who's talking.
All right. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, the amount of money that we have received from the state for COVID-19 is 8.2 million. That is what has come forward. At this date, we are not aware of additional monies coming forward. There may be. You are aware that the approval of the 1.2 million, of which it was actually 900,000 that came from the CDBG fund, that that was the first monies that we received. And then we were able, in the CDBG of unexpended, there was the approval that we could put the 290-something-plus-thousand with the 900-and-something-thousand, so that 1.1 million for CDBG funding as it relates to COVID. I will have for you the paperwork, the final paperwork that had to go to Philadelphia through Mr. Cromer was submitted today. So the allocations that are proposed for that will be coming forward to you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Hi, yes. The chair recognizes Councilman Paul Battle. You have the floor, sir.
I'd like to ask the new employee. I see that there's a $26 million difference in expenditures and the funds that are taken in for this quarter. So are you saying that when you deal with the fourth quarter, the money's taken in and the expenditures will balance out or will exceed expectations?
Well, Councilman Battle, I just wanted to remind everybody that during the fourth quarter are when our revenues truly hit. So at this point, you will see an imbalance because most of our heavy revenues come in at the end of June, which is personal property tax. So far, I did a quick reconciliation to date, and we've received 13 million to date. Of course, this is through the end of the third quarter, but as we continue to move into the fourth quarters, you'll see the revenues that we are expecting to come in. So as of today, we received 13 million from personal property. We're expected to receive another 24 to 25 million in real estate. And so we're in June, so you won't see a huge fluctuation for expenditures toward the end of June. We have maybe three more weeks and maybe one more payroll, two more payrolls. So you'll actually see them balance out. I put the two-year comparison so you can see that this is consistent from year to year.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Any other questions?
Mayor, I have a question. This is Bill.
Yes, sir. The chair recognizes Councilman Bill Moody.
My question on some of the money, federal money and state money that we're getting, are there any plans to develop a grant program for our businesses?
So what I will... Councilman Moody, I will refer that question to Dr. Patton because I know she is working on developing a plan for the dollars that we've received.
And the reason why I'm asking that, some cities have already awarded grants to businesses that have been under, obviously, economic stress. So I think it's incumbent upon us to offer our businesses an opportunity to share in that money as well.
Dr. Patton?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of city council, yes, we are considering through economic development some of the COVID monies to be considered for businesses. In working with the 17 other city managers and county administrators, which we talk Monday, Wednesday, and Friday since we've been in the COVID state, some cities already had programs of that nature set up. Our economic development had the facade program and things like that set up. But this will be monies that will be through economic development to assist businesses that have been impacted. So the answer to your question is yes.
Thank you. Any other questions from any member of council? Any other questions? Here and now. We'll move to our next presentation. Dr. Patton?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of city council, I will bring in to the screen Mr. Lockaby, who will make his presentation on the broadband.
Thank you, Dr. Patton. Mr. Mayor, honorable counselors, can you all hear me?
We can. Please proceed. You have the floor.
Great. Thank you. I'm... As Dr. Patton said, my name is Mike Lockaby. I'm with the firm of Guin, Waddell, Carroll, and Lockaby. We represent local governments in lots of different things. I personally work a lot on infrastructure and economic development, and specifically broadband. And so when Mr. Jones and Mr. Ashby contacted me to talk in greater depth about what options the City of Portsmouth had, I put together a presentation to you. I hope that you'll feel free to ask me questions at appropriate times during this discussion. There'll certainly be time at the end. I'll try to be anecdotal and conversational while also covering kind of the salient points, the most important points for you to have as your take homes. Let's see here. So the basic problem that Portsmouth has, and this is both my own observation and also what Mr. Jones has told me, is the same as many, many, many localities in the United States. And that is that there is a... The economics of broadband are strange. It's what's... For the most part, it's what we call a natural monopoly, which means that most geographical areas are only going to support one or two or three people doing the same line of business. And if you're one of those first one or two entrants into the market, you have a pretty dominant position. This has resulted in some underinvestment, especially in poorer and rural communities all through... And this is throughout Virginia. It's throughout the country. It's nothing special that there are a few areas in the City of Portsmouth where it makes absolutely no sense, it's completely inexplicable, that there is poor or no service at all in a modern urban city like Portsmouth. And yet, that's the case. It's because the first entrance or two to the market has the market, and they have very little incentive to expand. This is a needle that's been threaded in different ways over time. If you go back to electricity and telephone, the way that we threaded the needle was that the State Corporation Commission guaranteed electricity and telephone companies a rate of return if they served everybody and served them well. That's not the course of action that has been followed with Internet. We've decided to try for a... In theory, the idea is that the way that we're doing it through predominantly competition should result in quicker innovation, but it also results in a lot of people being left behind. Now, there are big differences in the income streams that private companies can think about versus what you would think about. And it's all about figuring out how to make the money and the capital investment match. Now, you all are familiar with your city water system, your city sewer system. You spend a ton of money upfront, and then over a long, long, long time, you amortize that money through fees. And it's a similar theory with broadband. With your local fiber company, whether that's Cox or Comcast or any of a half dozen others, they will invest a whole bunch of money upfront, and then over the next 20 years, they will do relatively little maintenance or upgrades. Not to say they do none. They do a significant amount. It is not easy. But they will do relatively little and collect the fees in order to amortize that cost. You, as a city, you have different income streams because it's not just the fees that are the most important thing to you. There are other things that you need to take into account with regard to the provision of broadband. For instance, there are lots of studies out there with regard to property values that going from no Internet to having fiber Internet increases the real estate values by 3% to 5%. So there you go. You've just increased your real estate tax base. And if you bring in just a couple of businesses with big old investments in machinery and tools and jobs, all of a sudden, you have really gotten into some significant investment opportunities. And that can justify a capital investment for you that a private provider really couldn't justify on a business basis. And finally, there's the issue of serving the public interest. And this is really a policy decision. It's 100% up to you. I can't really speak to it as an attorney, but there is a certain public interest. How is it that you bring up the next generation? How is it that you allow people to move into areas of your city? How is it that you... If, for instance, the Redevelopment and Housing Authority, housing campuses, there are places in those and around those where there is simply no Internet available. How do those children in the midst of a pandemic get their education? Well, in most places in the city, they're getting it over the Internet. But how do those kids in that area gain access to the resources that are going to... That are gonna make them the leaders of the next generation? So those are things that might be... It's almost impossible to translate that into monetary value. But if you may very well believe that that has a value that justifies some amount of money from general fund, from general tax revenues. Let's talk about the next... The next slide. So this was something that, you know, Daniel Jones and Solomon Ashby and I spent a lot of time talking about, which is why an authority? And we went to the General Assembly last winter and tried to pitch the idea to them that the city should be doing this. But in my last slide, you saw a reference to turf protection. Incumbent providers have set up a lot of regulatory hurdles to cities doing this, doing Internet on a utility basis on their own. The City of Lynchburg in the late '90s set up its own system, and the incumbent providers in the Lynchburg area just about lost their minds. And they had a law passed that prohibited cities, towns, and counties from providing Internet unless they met a certain set of very difficult-to-meet criteria. You have to go to the State Corporation Commission. You need to make a detailed set of showings and also have to go through... You have to re-go through that process every five years. And if you don't meet the criteria every five years, then you need to sell off your system almost immediately. Nobody has ever successfully negotiated the State Corporation Commission process. So it was established in 2003, and nobody has, to date, ever successfully negotiated it. So it's essentially a dead letter. It essentially results in a prohibition on cities, towns, and counties from providing Internet to individuals. Also, you don't have any protection for your trade secrets. Now, Internet providers typically have a rather broad interpretation of what their trade secrets are. It's one of the very few industries I've ever come across in which the people who provide the service don't want you to know where they're providing the service. It's hard to sell something if you don't know where it's being sold, but yet, that seems to be the case. But there are a lot of trade secrets and a lot of things that you can talk about in that... A lot of things that can be developed in the process of developing your business model. So the only thing that a city can do without getting a State Corporation Commission certificate is to lease dark fiber. Now, dark fiber means unlit fiber. So you're just owning a strand of fiber optic cable in the ground. Now, I've seen many localities who have contracts with people where they build much, much more into it, where they say, "We're leasing you the dark fiber, but you're also going to do X, Y, and Z and A, B, C, and you're going to release that dark... You're going to light the dark fiber, and then you're going to sell that service to so-and-so and to so-and-so." And at a certain point, it's always bothered me greatly because at what point is a lease becoming a service contract where they're basically just providing Internet at your direction as a private, as a public-private partnership? It's always made me uncomfortable, and I've recommended against it. It's always made me uncomfortable and I've recommended against it. What's the upshot of this entire thing? Well, as Daniel pointed out, it would be really nice to just turn up the wifi as high as it would go inside a, a neighborhood library and have all the houses around there be able to hook up to the city wifi. But you can't do that. It's been prohibited by state law. And it is almost mind-blowing, it's, it, it, that you can't do that in the time of, of, of a pandemic, but yet here we are. Um, the benefits of a wireless service authority is that it can provide internet service to the public or it can work directly with people who do without worrying about when you cross over from leasing dark fiber to provide, having a service contract with somebody. It also has a FOIA exemption for trade secrets if it either develops any or comes into possession of any. Um, and it can really open up diverse economic development and community development opportunities. And I'm going to go into that in a little bit more detail in the next slide. And the wireless service authority, I'm going to get into, uh, how they function, but in many ways, it just functions as, um, an enterprise fund, a not, uh, an enterprise fund of government, another arm that is financially and legally separate, but is still part of the city organization. Again, very much like your water or sewer funds. So the powers of the wireless service authority, it's, it is an independent political subdivision, just like your economic development authority or your redevelopment and housing authority. So from the perspective of Virginia law, it operates differently. You would even have agreements between it and the city, although it would all be part of the same family. Um, it can provide the internet and telecommunications service. It can pro- it can have customers. And I will tell you that the eastern, uh, the Eastern Shore Broadband Authority and the Roanoke Valley Broadband Authority are actual providers. If you start a business in the city of Roanoke, you can call up the Roanoke Valley Broadband Authority and get business-grade service. Um, they can also partner with private firms and economic development prospects. And I, I have the example of, again, the Roanoke Valley Broadband Authority. There was a particular situation where, uh, a new business was coming into one of the localities that was a member of the broadband authority. And this new business really needed some super fast internet. They were sending, uh, designs for these incredibly complicated, um, manufacturing processes around the world and it needed to be basically controllable from other areas of the world. That's the level of bandwidth that they needed. And the local incumbent provider said, well, we can give you that connection in six to nine months. So this new business, getting ready to open, called up the Economic Development Office and said, hey, that's unacceptable. So the Economic Development Office turned around and called the Roanoke Valley Broadband Authority and said, we're a member of this authority, what do we do to make this happen within 60 days? 60 days later, they had the internet that they needed in that locality's industrial park. That made that business happy. And while we already had them in our locality, CEOs of businesses that are happy talk to each other. And all of a sudden, that CEO is telling his buddies that, hey, you need to open a facility in the eastern United States? You probably ought to look at the Roanoke Valley. I would say that there is, that that's one of the biggest benefits to having this. And, and in many ways, as I say in my slide, it's like an IDA for internet. It is a way of making things happen in ways and on schedules that you otherwise could not. Uh, they can also form public-private partnerships to leverage private equity. And I know that y'all have had some interesting experiences with public-private partnerships, with the downtown tunnel and all that business. But that's not actually what I'm talking about. Um, we're talking about a, a, a rather different model. The reason why you do a public-private partnership is because you either don't have cash on hand, you don't have expertise on hand, or both. And you guys have a fair amount of expertise. Uh, Mr. Jones is a rather smart individual. Um, I don't know what your cash situation is. I know that, I just heard that y'all are doing surprisingly well, given the times that we're in, but, uh, I don't, don't know. But the idea is also that probably Daniel Jones and Dr. Patton don't want to be getting calls from people in the middle of the night that their internet just went down. Uh, so a lot of times what you'll do is you will set up a, you'll set up a program where the city is providing certain payments, whether those come from general funds, whether those come from state grants, from federal grants, from other money that you have access to. Turning that around to a private provider and in return, that private provider is making commitments to meet speed targets, build-out targets, and to build out to neighborhoods that otherwise they probably wouldn't want to. Uh, and that's what I mean by a public-private partnership. And that happens, right now that's happening a lot in rural areas. Uh, I'm starting to see it happen a little bit more in urban areas where, again, you have these pockets where simply put, the incumbent providers haven't seen the neighborhoods as being wealthy enough to have a return for having any decent internet there. If you can go and you'll, and you say, you know what? You'll have the lucrative business of our industrial park if you also take and put in good internet in these three neighborhoods that you're probably never going to see an ROI on. All of a sudden, you have a pretty good relationship with, uh, with a private entity. And you can structure agreements to do that. Um, a wireless service authority can charge fees for its services, it can borrow money, issue bonds and notes, and otherwise do all the things necessary for its purposes. And those are not debts or obligations or contracts of the city. They are separate, they are outside of that. The only way the city winds up on the hook is if the city council, you all wearing your city council hat, sit down and vote to put yourselves on the hook. Let's go to the next, uh, slide. So I wanted to differentiate what, I know Mr. Jones has talked about with regard to Portsmouth from what the other South Side localities are doing. Now, you all probably are familiar with the Regional Fiber Ring. Um, I'm also working with the South Side Network Authority on that regional ring. That is a, what we call a middle mile, uh, backbone, um, facility. And what that means is that it's providing a, it's like providing the interstate highways of internet backbone. What we're talking about with regard to Portsmouth is providing the secondary streets of internet for people to get into individual homes. And there are, as I mentioned, there are opportunities with unserved and underserved neighborhoods. There are opportunities with public housing campuses. There are opportunities to provide, uh, wireless internet, eh, to festivals or parks. Uh, all of these things are opportunities that you have. Um, and that the Regional Fiber Ring, at least in its initial stages, are, it's simply not there. Uh, that's simply not where their minds are. And, and it may be that down the road several years, it makes sense for your efforts to merge into what the South Side Network Authority is up to. Uh, and there are provisions within the Wireless Service Authorities Act for that type of a merger of authorities if that becomes a reasonable thing to do at some point down the road. But it, it is going to be pursuing, at least in the near future, different projects from what the city of Portsmouth is primarily focused upon. And I know Mr. Jones can speak to you more about what those specific projects are that, um, he and Dr. Patton and your staff team have been envisioning. We go to the next slide? All right. So if you did decide that you wanted to form an authority, you have several steps. Um, you have Articles of Incorporation. Articles of Incorporation set out what the powers of the authority are. It's like your city charter. Um, you resolve to consider the creation, you approve the draft articles, you consider the creation, you advertise it at least once in the newspaper. You wait 30 days after the advertisement and hold a public hearing. You can have a referendum if you want, or if 10% of the voters in the city petition for it. I have never seen anybody actually have a referendum on creating a broadband authority. This is also a provision that's in the Water and Waste Authorities Act. Also, something I've never seen, I guess it was something that people did back in the 1960s or 70s. It's not a thing that folks do anymore for these. The authority is created upon adoption of the articles by the council. That can be on the day of the public hearing or you can, after the public hearing, uh, direct staff to go back and draft amendments to the articles for final consideration. And then you file the articles with the State Corporation Commission. Now, one of the key things here is who do you appoint to the board? Now, for complicated historical reasons, y'all are familiar, your EDA and your redevelopment and housing authority, those are not you, you have to appoint somebody else to those boards. However, for the board of a wireless service authority, you can actually appoint yourselves. So one option which some localities have done is they simply say whoever is on the city council is on the board. Or alternatively, they say, well, we're going to, uh, you know, of the seven of us, four of us want to appoint ourselves, but three of us know somebody in our district who used to be the captain in charge of the IT command for Norfolk. And so, um, we're going to appoint that person because they're smarter and they're retired and have more time than I do to devote to this. And that works really well also. Um, I know one locality where the Board of Supervisors initially appointed itself to be the board. And then one of the members, um, he didn't run again for Board of Supervisors, but he stayed on the board of the broadband authority because he had had a long career, uh, in IT. He just started working for Ma Bell back in the 80s and worked his way up through it. So, a- and he, he's, he's, he's a huge asset to the authority. So there are lots of different models there. I might suggest that you guys keep your fingers pretty deeply into what you're doing because, uh, this is important and there are social benefit aspects to this as well as the purely running this as a business aspect of what you're up to. One thing that is difficult sometimes to get to is that you need to figure out who your initial appointees to the board will be before you adopt the Articles of Incorporation for advertisement. I know that sounds odd. I didn't make the rules, the General Assembly did, I will not question their wisdom. So, uh, that's the, how you form an authority. Uh, we cover the, I think that the next, do we have any more slides, Daniel? Nope, all right. I'm open for questions. I know that there are many things that I probably didn't cover and a few that I did that probably just bored you, but, uh, what else have I, what else have I not covered that you need to know?
Uh, thank you, sir. This is John, John Rowe. Uh, are there any questions, uh, from members of council?
Yes, Mayor, Councilman Glover.
Yes, sir, Councilman Glover, you have the floor.
Uh, Attorney Lockaby, thank you for, uh, that presentation. It was very, uh, informative. So, so basically ju- just, you know, so I'm understanding, by having the broadband authority, it kind of gives the locality more control of how, how their internet can be delivered.
It gives you a lot more opportunities to be involved with and to help to steer how internet will be delivered in your locality, that's right.
Right, because one of the things that you pointed out during the pandemic, I know I've talked to a lot of folks over at Cox and other places in our public housing communities, um, there were some large gaps where our, our young people in those communities uh, could not, could not attach to the internet to be able to learn. So I appreciate you, uh, pointing that out as a potential opportunity to expand in those underserved or, or areas that need it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Mayor.
Yes.
Lisa Lucas Burke, you have the floor.
Thank you, Attorney Lockaby. Um, appreciate this information. I was in on the ground floor when Chesapeake, Virginia Beach, Norfolk and Suffolk came together, um, with just an idea at first. And so, uh, we're glad to be able to be to this point. Uh, but my question is for the, uh, formation of the board. Um, is what kind of cost or, um, I, I don't, I don't know if that is something that you can answer for us or if it's different for each locality depending on how they, um, how deep they get into their board. Uh, but is there any cost that we should be concerned about in getting this together?
Simply to form a board is cheap. I mean, I've given, I think it costs $50 or $65 to file all of the documents you need with the State Corporation Commission. And I gave Solomon my fees to do this and I think that I had, gave a cap of $15,000 and I won't get anywhere near to it. So to say to form an authority is just not that difficult. It's once you decide what you need to start doing that you start spending money because all of a sudden, hey, we're going to light up this park so that kids can go out there and do their homework, uh, in a socially distanced way in the park, at least in theory. And wait, we have to buy $65,000 worth of antennas in order to do that? Well, that's, that's when you start talking about real money. Just setting up an authority is cheap. Um, but it allows you to have involvement with private providers. I know, uh, of some localities where they have decided that they're going to sink literally millions of dollars into making their authorities, uh, large and highly effective. And Roanoke Valley is one of those authorities where they've done that. I know of other localities where they run it on a shoestring and they probably have been in business for 10 years and still haven't put 50 grand into it. And yet they've done some really effective things for their localities.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the chair recognizes Dr. Patton. Dr. Patton?
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. Um, you are probably aware that the governor spoke today in a press conference. And before coming in, I called our superintendent because Phase Two and Phase Three uh, has a great deal of impact on education. And one of the things, Mr. Jones and myself, Mr. Jones working with the IT Director for Portsmouth Public Schools, both the superintendent and I talking, um, there is a desert in our city uh, as it pertains to all of our communities in which in all of our communities, we have, uh, public school students who do not have access to the internet. Now, what the governor is proposing is that school systems, when they, um, present their proposal on moving forward, will have some virtual education in it. And, um, so with the COVID money that the superintendent has received, a lot of that money is going to go in the purchase of devices, but a big part of it is trying to provide hotspots for wifi across the communities. So there is a great need as, uh, education from COVID impact going virtual and into the future. This is something that we as a city definitely have to address in order for our students to be, um, ready in the virtual education realm.
I was muted. Any other questions from, uh, members of council? Here and, uh, Dr. Patton, let's put this on, uh, a future agenda, um, the next agenda if we can for further discussion.
Mayor, I, and members of council, I shall do that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're now at public hearings. We have three public hearings which are planning items. Um, 20 dash one. We have three public hearings, which are planning items, um, twenty dash one, four, four. We'll take each, uh, public hearing, um, separately, and these are on first reading. And so, the protocol tonight, typically what, uh, we follow is, uh, Doc, um, our city clerk reads the caption of the matter, and then I call upon the applicant, and the applicant has ten minutes to, uh, present his or her application. Then I call upon Dr. Patton, who typically calls upon our deputy, uh, city manager and planning director, and then we open the public hearing. Uh, because we're virtual and don't have, we, we will have the applicants by phone, but we'll take it this order tonight. I'll ask, uh, Debra to read the caption, then I'll ask Dr. Patton to, um, explain the application, and then we'll bring the applicant in by telephone. The applicant, again, will have ten minutes. Uh, Madam Clerk, if you will time that, please. And, um, after that, we'll open the public hearing. After the public hearing, I'll close the public hearing, and then we'll, uh, consider the matter on its first reading. And so, our first item is Item A Z dash twenty dash oh one, and Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of this public hearing, please?
Yes, sir. Item A Z twenty dash oh one uptown, Anthony Claude of Claude's Lawn Care is requesting to rezone approximately point five two nine acres at fifteen twenty-five County Street. From D two Form Base Code, D two F B C, the frontage is designated as public open space to light industrial for use as a storage yard. The property is designated on the future land use map in the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan as mixed residential. The property is owned by the Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority. Planning Commission recommends denial.
Again, uh, following the protocol that we just established, uh, Dr. Patton?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, I will call on, um, Mr. Bob Baldwin, Deputy City Manager and Director of Planning to speak.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, members of city council. Um, let me get to our first slide here. Uh, as noted, this is a request to rezone this triangular shaped parcel. Go back. One more. There we go, that's good. Perfect. Um, rezone this triangular shaped parcel as indicated on the slide from a D two Form Base Code, um, to light industrial. Um, the use as indicated was for outdoor storage, um, and parking used by Claude's Lawn Care. Uh, property is currently owned by PRHA. It was acquired using CDVG funds as part of the development of the Westbury neighborhood. And over the years, the property has been shown in various plans and, um, comprehensive plans as either park, open space, or a buffer parcel. Next slide, please. Uh, this is the, um, layout that was submitted by the applicant as part of his application. Um, it shows their suggested laydown area. It shows some landscaping and drainage, um, for the property. Um, adjacent to the site, you see, uh, an area that's labeled as Peninsula Avenue. I think you're aware, that's the, um, section of Peninsula Avenue that's undeveloped. Um, it's basically a paper street that runs back towards the CSX property to the, through the rear, and so that is an unapproved city ride along. Next slide, please. During the development of the city's comprehensive plan and direction of city council, um, land use study was prepared for the, um, current D two Form Base Code of zone property in anticipation of eliminating the D two Form Base Code and replacing with more traditional zoning. And this is a slide showing, uh, the proposed zoning that was developed during that process in twenty eighteen. Um, and you can see that very small triangular parcel with the arrow pointing to it in that D two Form Base Code, um, visit for the land use plan. This property was identified, uh, again, to be used as either park, open space, and, um, this gives you an indication of how this triangular parcel sits at the edge of where Westbury, uh, runs up, um, to the western edge of Westbury at the County Street. Next slide, please. That might be the last one, can you even go back? It's our last slide. So, uh, Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this property on, uh, March the third, twenty twenty, and by a vote of five to zero, recommended denial. Um, this concludes my presentation. I'm certainly, um, available to answer any questions you might have. And I note that the applicant, Mr. Anthony Claude, is present via, um, telephone. He's available to provide comments and answer any questions, uh, you may have about his proposed use.
Uh, thank you, sir. Before we go to Mr. Claude, does any member of council have a question for Mr. Baldwin?
Yes, Sir Mayor, I have a question.
Here and none?
Mayor.
Uh, yes, is that Councilman Clark?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Sir, you have the floor.
All right, thank you. Um, the question I have is, based on the size of this parcel, is it even feasible that it could have a residential structure on it due to the space? And my concern is, is since it was left in open space and it still belongs to PRHA, I believe it would be more feasible to use it as what the absentee's requesting for than to leave it a blank parcel, because at least that way it would go on tax rolls, and with all of the, uh, setbacks and everything else, I didn't know if it was large enough to feasibly put a residential structure on there at all.
To answer your question, the, um, is a very odd shaped triangular parcel, uh, it's a little over half of an acre, and while the comprehensive plan, uh, kind of identified that as being in a mixed residential area, um, as we've noted, we think the only alternative use other than what's being proposed, quite frankly, is park and open space. It really does not have any other, um, realistic, um, land development that we would, uh, think would be appropriate in that location.
Thank you.
Mayor, this is Bill. I got a question, uh.
Yes, sir, and you have the floor.
Yes, uh, uh.
Mr. Baldwin, I take it that the Housing Authority is a willing seller?
Um, yes, sir, they have been, um, working with us for some period of time with Mr. Claude.
And also know that, uh, they have a civic league out in Westbury. I didn't, unless I've missed it, I did not see where, uh, they showed up to oppose it.
Uh, no, sir.
Um, and are there also utilities under that, uh, parcel?
Uh, that I'm not aware of, um, a hundred percent, uh, without checking into that for you. I'm not aware of any.
You, you know, I've been out to the property, and with the, the railroad track, as, uh, my colleague just mentioned, the odd shape of the property, and we have a business that's, uh, looking to, uh, uh, expand and expand in the area of using that for a staging area, is, I believe, what Claude, uh, mentioned, uh, during the planning commission, that he would use that as a staging area, uh, mostly for plants that come in, uh, from out of state. So, uh, I, I think, uh, this property's been off the tax roll long enough, uh, as much as twenty years. I think, uh, although it's certainly not a windfall, uh, from now, put it on the tax roll, but, uh, um, I think we need to, uh, uh, to approve, uh, the use of this from Mr. Claude, so again, begin generating, uh, the tax dollars. So, I will, uh, I will support, uh, uh, Mr. Claude's use, proposed use of the property in the rezoning.
Uh, questions to, uh?
Mayor, I have a question, Councilman Glover.
Uh, sure, you have the floor.
Um, Mr. Baldwin, um, on this, on this particular, particular parcel, um, under the comprehensive plan, mixed use residential, I heard my colleagues ask the questions, but has anyone else, um, talked about, will it be properly landscaped as well, uh, to make sure that, that, that it has good curb appeal on that, that property if it's, if it's, um, developed as proposed?
Um, Councilman Glover, to answer your question, um, as noted in our staff report, the applicant would be required to, uh, do proper screening and landscaping for the use he has proposed. So, yes, it would be landscaped.
Okay.
Any other questions to Mr. Baldwin?
Yes, um, I have a question, Mayor.
Uh, and ma'am, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Mr. Baldwin, um, I did not make, um, as a liaison, I did not make that March meeting, but I just want you to express, um, to counsel some of the concerns that Planning Commission had, and the reason primarily for the, the denial.
Okay, I think the, uh, primary reason, as I indicated in the beginning of the, uh, presentation, is that, um, over the years since the property was acquired, um, by PRHA, it was indicated as a park or, uh, open space area for Westbury. I think there was some, um, consideration by the Planning Commission that that, that use should be retained. Um, and as I also mentioned, the, uh, number of plans that have been done, number of studies been done over the years since Westbury started, this parcel has always been picked up as a open space or, um, a park type of parcel. So, I think, uh, basically, the Planning Commission was looking at the history of the plans that have been done, have shown this thing as a park, and they felt that this would be, um, quite different, that would have been shown in historical plans for the, um, for that parcel.
But those plans, those, Mayor, this is Bill.
Yes, sir. You have the floor.
But those, those plans for a park have never come to fruition, and, and also, the railroad track, I think, I think that, uh, certainly, uh, I don't think too accommodative or too practical to use that as a park.
Uh, that's a question I would, I would just, uh, uh, note that what has historically been done is to recognize the historic use of the property from the original development of Westbury.
Thank you.
Uh, let's take a pause here. I don't, can you restate yourself, Mr. Baldwin?
Um, yes, sir, hopefully you can, you can hear me. Um, what I just indicated, that all the plans have been done, have been consistent with showing the property as originally proposed for Westbury, that's why it continues to be picked up as park or open space.
Any other questions of Mr. Baldwin? Let's bring the applicant, uh, into the conversation. Uh, Mr. Jones, can you unmute, uh, the applicant, uh, Mr. Anthony Claude? Mr. Claude, are you there?
Good afternoon. Good afternoon.
This is John Rowe. Uh, you have ten minutes to explain your application to city council.
Good afternoon, Councilman, and Vice Mayor, and the council members. My name is Anthony Claude. I'm with, uh, stay in the Lawn Point subdivision here in Portsmouth, and my office is sixteen oh one County Street, which is next door to this property. Now, over the time, over the couple of years since I've been here, since nineteen ninety-eight, I've invested greatly in, in the city of Portsmouth, where I came in and bought my office here, um, when I, when, when I moved from Chesapeake, and then I liked what I saw, and I, I bought my house here back in two thousand. I've been here ever since. Um, at Claude's Lawn Care, we basically do mo- mowing and landscape maintenance and, um, some, some very complex landscape job stuff. Over the years, we have had, uh, issues with getting plants in and stuff like that, in a timely fashion to do those certain landscape jobs we gotta do. So, we entered, um, back in, I think it was two thousand fifteen, we talked with the Housing Authority about it. They did their research and saw that it was, it was designated as open space, but they really had no real plans for it, and they approached me about it, and I told them, yeah, we could do a, a laydown yard or something, because they really was trying to get it off their tax rolls, I mean, off their books and stuff, and make some use of it for what, you know, where they could. They reviewed our plans and everything, and they thought it was a good idea. Um, since that time, management, I mean, um, staff has changed over there, and new staff came in, so they, we re-entered the conversation back in, I think it was two, February of two thousand ni- uh, nineteen, where we went back and forth over, and they checked their, checked their, um, their particular use and everything, and they came to the same conclusion that it wasn't a whole lot they could do with it, and they really wanted to at least move it, if, if it could be put on the tax roll and a feasible use, they would. They, basically, we reviewed our plans and everything, and they, they concluded it made sense that we moved it forward, trying, trying to get a rezon, but that was the issue with the rezoning. If we look at this small triangle that we're talking about, we're only talking a half acre on the corner here, even though it's been open space and park space, but it has never been maintained to that, to that standard, um, as some of the other parks here in, in the city has, and most of the time, we, we're the ones that use, had to take care of it and clean up, because it's adjacent to our property. Um, given the fact it is a regular shape, there are some utilities, some drainage utilities that goes through the property, and the setbacks and stuff do make it, you know, unable to be, um, developed, and it's been, it's been this way for over about twenty years, with no plans of, it, um, actually development. I did speak with the Westbury Civic League Association, Mrs. Pamela Wilson, as early as, um, Saturday, Saturday about ten o'clock, and she came over and looked at it, and I gave her the same plans that you guys got in, to the, um, presentation and stuff, and she said, as long as it's, her comments, and the, the one lady that was with her, was, as long as it's landscape, open space, it, it'll be a lot better than sitting there with all the, just traffic and trash that always be up there, as long as we're gonna, uh, provide some landscaping and just keep it clean and stuff. I wanna make sure you guys understand that it's not gonna be like a junkyard or anything, just a laydown yard. Sometimes we have piles there, sometime we have rocks there, and it is for jobs, we're not selling anything, it's just for the jobs that we're currently doing and stuff like that. Um, by, and the, the whole art to what we're doing is just to expand our business a little bit. We have just about, in another couple of years, we have just about out, outgrown this place. If we, if we could get this lot next door, towards, it would actually give us another, maybe five or ten years here at this location, unless we figure out another model or a way to condense it or move to another location, or, um, open up some satellite offices in other cities and stuff. Basically, we, we currently how, we currently got about fifteen to twenty-five employees here, depending on the season and what we're doing. By allowing us to have this lot and getting the rezoning to what we, we currently just rezoned it for, a laydown yard, we could probably add another fifteen to twenty people here. Our current, um, staff here consists about eighty, eighty percent of the people here stay here in Portsmouth, and if that continues to be the trend, that'll be another thirteen to fourteen people here that's, um, that has stayed their careers here in Portsmouth and work here. These folks buy rent, they pay, they pay bills here, the utilities and everything else here in Portsmouth. Um, if we, you know, it, when we talk about development, we would just follow all of the, um, planning commissioners' recommendations in there with the proper fencing and stuff like that, but we just need a spot where we can kind of, um, look forward to expanding. The light industrial is the only, the only, uh, when we, when I was talking with the Planning Commission, we was trying to figure out what type of zoning would be, and that was the one that we thought, that I thought that would be the best use of it. If there's another one, I understand it, but this is the one that, that we, uh, we, we was presented with. Uh, and we only talking a quarter, we talking a half acre right here on the corner, and it's, and it's still gonna remain open space, even, we don't have any plans to build any type of buildings or anything on it at all. Um, and we're just looking forward to, you know, kind of stay here in Portsmouth, if we possibly can, stay right here in Portsmouth, and give our dollars back to the city, you know, we just trying to, and trying to open up a little bit of more areas of where we can do more business at, right here on this corner, where we are heavily invested here in Portsmouth, in, in, in homes and real estate and, and work, and the workers here are, got, you know, apartments and homes and stuff in the same community, and we just want a, an opportunity just to do some expansion.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from members of council to Mr. Claude? Here and none? We'll conclude the presentations and we'll open the public hearing, and I declare that the public hearing on Z dash twenty dash zero one is now open. And Madam Clerk, uh, any comments that we have received about the agenda, are the public hearings, they'll be made part of our record, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And they have been shared with city councils?
Yes, sir, they have.
Anybody want to speak on this matter that's listening in? Here and none, I declare the public hearing- Hearing none, I declare the public hearing closed. In order for us to put this matter before us for our consideration on its first reading, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Madam Clerk, do you have the maker and the second?
I do. The motion is made by Councilman Clark and seconded by Councilman Battle.
Good. Any discussion on the motion? This will be a roll call vote. If you're in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. If you're opposed, no. Madam Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Simmons?
Aye.
Mayor Rowe?
Aye. And Madam Clerk, that passes on first reading.
Yes, sir.
It'll be on our second reading at our next agenda, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay, next item under public hearings is U.P.-19-20. And will you read the caption of this matter, please?
Yes, sir. Downtown Jeremy Mills of ICS Home Investments LLC is requesting a use permit for four townhomes on .234 acres at a density of 17 dwelling units per acre at 609 Columbia Street and downtown D1 zoning district and T4 sub-district. The property is designated on the future land use map and the Bill 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan as mixed use downtown. The property is owned by ICS Home Investments LLC. The Planning Commission recommends approval with conditions.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Patton, will you?
Mayor, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, I call on Deputy City Manager Baldwin to make the presentation.
Hey, good evening once again. I'll go to the first slide here. Here we go. Again, as noted, this is a request for a use permit for four townhomes at 609 Columbia Street. This isn't our downtown district in the T4 sub-district. As you can see from the slide, this shows the location of the property. It's right near the intersection of Washington Street and Columbia Street, where Columbia Street dead ends there. The area that is shown in blue there, you can see that is all part of the D1-T4 district. So this property is well embedded within the T4 sub-district. Next slide, please.
Anthony Claude?
Is now exiting.
And while this slide may be a little bit difficult to read, this is the site plan showing the four townhouse units. We'll have conceptual to show you in just one second. This shows you the basic layout where the properties will front on Columbia Street and the stormwater management B and P for the four townhouse units at the rear of the property. Next slide, please. So this is the rendering for the front of the proposed townhouses. I would note, since this is in the area of downtown, which is regulated through the Downtown Design Committee, the applicant has appeared before the Downtown Design Committee, presented his plans, made a few modifications, and the Downtown Design Committee has approved. You see a note on there that says it doesn't reflect all modifications. There are a few color modifications that were approved by the DDC that aren't shown exactly as on this rendering. This is basically the, the concept of the design. Next slide, please. Because there's another one.
That's the last one.
Okay. So pretty much it, pretty straightforward use permit application. Planning Commission, at their meeting of March 3rd, 2020, voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of the use permit. There are five general conditions. Those were listed in the City Manager's letter provided with the staff materials. And once again, I'd note that Mr. Jeremy Mills, the applicant, is present via telephone, available to provide comments and to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions by any member of council or Mr. Baldwin? And hearing none, we'll now bring in Mr. Jeremy Mills. Are you there, sir? Mr. Mills? Is Mr. Jeremy Mills available? All right. Hearing that he's not there.
I'm here. I had to unmute, apologize.
Okay, sir. We're about to start the public hearing, and you have 10 minutes to explain your, your application.
It's pretty much as Mr. Baldwin was, as explained. I'm taking an empty, an empty parcel on a dead end street. It's not currently in use, and I'm hoping to develop the land, build four single family townhouses in that area with all the concessions that are agreed upon with the Downtown Design Committee.
Thank you, sir. Does any member of council have questions for the applicant? Hearing none, we're ready, did I hear a question? Hearing none, we're ready for the public hearing. This is a public hearing on U.P.-19-20. I declare the public hearing open. And again, Madam Burke, any comments that we have received either telephonically or in writing have been transcribed and made part of the record?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I declare the public hearing of U.P.-19-20 closed. We're ready to consider this matter so that we can put it before us for our consideration. Is there a motion to approve U.P.-19-20?
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion or questions?
Mr. Mayor, this is Elizabeth Simmons.
Yes, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. I'm just gonna say, I think this is a marvelous reuse of this property that was used by VDOT and then given back to us. This is a great way to reuse this, and the place has looked very attractive, so I'm happy to support this.
Thank you. Any other questions, discussion, comments by members of council? We're ready for the question. This will be a roll call, oral vote. If you're in favor of a motion, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, nay. And Madam Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Simmons?
Aye.
Mayor Rowe?
Aye. And Madam Clerk, that passes on its first reading.
Correct.
We'll have it on the second reading at the next council meeting.
Yes, sir.
We come to item U.P.-20-01, which is another public hearing. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption for that public, for this matter?
Yes, sir. U.P. 20-01, Airline Commercial Corridor. Mark Davis requests a use permit for an outdoor kennel at 2880B Airline Boulevard. The property is zone general mixed use and is a part of the Victory West Shopping Center.
Is now exiting.
The property is further described as tax map 577, parcel 20. The Comprehensive Plan recommends commercial development for the property. The Planning Commission recommends denial.
Thank you, ma'am. Before I call on our city manager, I understand that the applicant has requested that this matter be deferred to our June 23rd meeting because the applicants, both of them cannot be present for this meeting. As a matter of procedure, let's get the briefing from the city manager and her staff, and I'll open the public hearing and continue it to our next meeting.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, I will call on Mr. Bob Baldwin, Deputy City Manager, to speak.
Okay, good evening once again. I'll be brief since this is a request for a deferral. As is indicated, this is a request for a use permit for a, for a kennel at an existing indoor kennel at 2880B Airline Boulevard. This is in the middle of a shopping center, property's own general mixed use, and it's part of the Victory West Shopping Center. Next slide, please. This gives you the general location of where the property is, again, on Airline Boulevard, the shopping center. Basically, the intersection of Airline and City Park Avenue. It is the Fort Rover Dog Daycare and Kennel, and they also do pet grooming as well. Next slide, please. This gives you the layout of the property that the applicant is using at the current time. You can see the interior of the building. If you look towards the right of the screen, you'll see an area that is marked Large Dog Outdoor Kennel. You'll also see an area marked Small Dog Outdoor Kennel. And those are really the two areas that are the subject of this use permit. The request is to create some outdoor kennel space for the, for the dogs. Next slide, please. A little bit tougher to see, but this shows you the corner of the shopping center, backside of the shopping center where the two kennel areas would be located. The one in yellow, you see marked upside the building, is the small dog area. The area with the red outline, that's the area for the small dog outdoor kennel as well. And as we're looking at this slide, I just make a note over to the left, you'll see that unused grassy area that's part of the shopping center. The owners of the shopping center have been allowing the operators of the kennel to walk dogs over there for taking care of their outdoor necessities. But the applicants are indicating they really would need, they'd like to have an area where they don't, the dogs don't have to be taken out individually on a leash and where they can let them out and have some playtime outdoors in these two areas as shown on this slide. And next slide, please. This is the view of the backside of the building. Again, if you look to the left of the building, right behind that telephone pole, that'd be, you know, the small dog area right behind that. And then the area by where you see that door, the backside of the building, would be fenced in, and that would be the area for the, for the large dogs. That area would be located on top of the, of the asphalt. And that is, that is the presentation tonight. Once again, the applicants are requesting deferral as indicated by the mayor. Both of the applicants wanted to be able to participate in the presentation tonight and could not be available, and therefore that is a request for the deferral.
Any questions of Mr. Baldwin?
Yes, Mayor, Councilman Glover.
Yes, sir. You have the.
Mr. Baldwin, was this, was this the, the one that we had, we had looked at previously in planning that, that was calling for, I think, a larger area outside in the rear?
I don't recall Councilman Glover looking at this one prior to this application.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions to Mr. Baldwin?
Yes, this is Elizabeth Simmons.
And ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you. Mr. Baldwin, when I read the staff report, you know, I'm all about animals and I'm all about business, but I'm also all about the residents behind. And I get the justification of the Planning Commission denying those who are residents behind there, but I didn't see any indication that any residents complained. And in fact, what I thought I read was that the residents came up and spoke in support of this application.
No, Councilman Simmons, that's correct. Staff, as you noted in the staff report, was concerned with the relatively short distance we felt between the outdoor kennels and the residential areas behind it. But the, we did not receive any objections from the neighbors back there, and the applicants indicated that they had spoken to the residents back there and they were in support.
Yes, thank you.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, is that Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And the Vice Mayor has something to add.
Right. Mr. Baldwin, I, I know that this business is wanting to utilize the space that it has on its property, but in a situation like this, is there any opportunity that we were able to offer them some other free space or, not free space, but available space for them to expand outdoor areas for the small and the large dogs?
Not that I'm aware of in this location. This is privately owned property. And again, they've been using that grassed area with the consent of the owners of the shopping center already. But I think what they wanted is something closer and attached to the building to make it easier for them to let the dogs out without requiring so much staff to do that, one, one dog at a time. So I don't think they were looking to be in any, any great distance away from that current location.
Thank you. Any other questions of Mr. Baldwin? With that, Mr. Baldwin and Mr. City Attorney, if you open the city, if you open the public hearing and continue it, then it does not have to be a recabaret house, is that correct?
That is correct, Mayor. You, you will operate under the existing public notice that's been filed.
Okay. With that, I'll open the public hearing on U.P.-20-01. And again, Madam Burke, any comments that happen to the city, they happen to be transcribed?
Yes, sir.
This public hearing is now continued until June 23rd. And we'll put it back on the agenda as a public hearing item and for its first reading. Thank you. We now come to the City Manager's Report. We have item 20-145. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of that, please?
An ordinance accepting an allocation of $38,410 from the State Compensation Board Technology Trust Fund and appropriating said amount in the FY 2020 Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Circuit Court Clerk's Office to fund technology maintenance and improvements.
So that we can put this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Move adoption.
Sir, second. Madam Clerk, we have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Did you get the maker of the motion and the second?
Yes, sir. I did.
We're ready for the discussion on this matter. Any discussion? We're ready for the question. This will be a roll call vote. If you're in favor of the motion, the adoption of the ordinance, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Madam Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Simmons?
Aye.
Mayor Rowe?
Aye. We're now at item 20-146, which is the consideration and adoption of another ordinance. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting additional children's mental health block grant funding in the amount of $25,690 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services and appropriating said amount in the FY 2020 Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund.
So that we can put this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Move for adoption.
Sir, second. We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. We're ready for discussion on the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, we're ready for the question. Again, this will be a roll call vote. If you're in favor of the motion, please vote aye. If you're opposed, vote nay. Madam Clerk, call the vote, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody? Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Semus?
Aye.
Mayor Row?
Aye. And we're now at item 20 dash 147, which is the consideration of adoption of a certain resolution. And Madam Clerk, will you read that resolution, please?
Yes, sir. A resolution authorized in the conveyance of 2520, 2610, and 2614, turnpike road to the Economic Development Authority.
So that we can put this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
Motion to adopt.
Sir, second.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded, which is to adopt the resolution. Any discussion on the matter? Ready for the question. If you're in favor of the motion, please indicate when your name is called by saying aye. If you're opposed, please vote nay. Madam Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Semus?
Aye.
Mayor Row?
Aye. We come to item 20 dash 148, which is the consideration of another resolution. And Madam Clerk, please read the caption of that resolution, please.
Yes, sir. A resolution in support of the redesignation of local workforce development areas 14 and 16 into the new single local workforce development area.
So that we can put this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Here and none. This, again, will be a roll call vote. If you're in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye when your name is called, or nay if you're opposed. Madam Clerk, please call the vote, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Semus?
Aye.
Mayor Row?
Aye. Which brings us to item 20 dash 149, which is the consideration of a certain resolution, the adoption of. And Madam Clerk, please read the caption of that resolution, please.
Yes, sir. A resolution to amend the cost allocation agreement between the cities of Chesapeake, Hampton, Newtford News, Norfolk, Portsmouth, Virginia Beach, and the Transportation District Commission of Hampton Roads.
So that we can put this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Sir, second.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Here and none. We're ready for the question. This will be a roll call vote. If you're in favor of the adoption of the resolution, please indicate by saying aye when your name is called, nay if you're opposed. And Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Semus?
Aye.
Mayor Row?
Aye. We come to item 20 dash 150, item submitted by council, and the chair recognizes himself. My colleagues on council, on October the 10th, 2017, the Portsmouth City Council adopted Resolution Number R 17 dash 33, which the caption read, "A resolution expressing the desire to relocate Confederate monument at the intersection of High Street and Court Street through the Cedar Grove Cemetery as soon as the governing state law clearly permits." And that was the essence of the resolution that was adopted. And it says that council desires the Confederate monument currently located at the intersection of High Street and Court Street to be relocated to Cedar Grove Cemetery as soon as the governing laws clearly permit its relocation. The discussion at that time, too, and it was clear to me that Cedar Grove Cemetery may not have the space. In fact, there might be people buried under what appears to be a empty or open space. Oak Grove was discussed as an alternate then, and there are other alternatives. This is not a new conversation as we discussed. In the 2020 session of the General Assembly, the General Assembly adopted House Bill 1537, which amended Section 15.2 dash 1812 of the state code. And so that we can move this matter along, I'm asking my colleagues on council that we direct the city attorney to give us a written analysis of the process in the newly elected or newly enacted Section 15.2 dash 1812, and the timeline, because it talks about a public hearing and which needs a specified period of advertisement and a period after the public hearing, another 30 days. So it would be beneficial for you to give us what the process is, how we can follow the process, and the timeline. In addition, because there has been dispute about the ownership of the monument, if you could give us your latest opinion about the ownership. The second thing is with councils' concurrence that we direct the city manager to bring back an ordinance to appropriate $100,000 to start the preliminary engineering necessary to move the monument. We need to know a better estimate, in fact, there is no estimate, of what the cost would be. And of the two sites, what site work would need to be done, what's the soil conditions, just like we discovered with the sale of monument, we may have some foundation problems that require some type of special foundation. And with the understanding, too, that if she needs additional money, that she come back. And we put this matter on the fast track. As she prepares the appropriation ordinance, we give her the go-ahead to go ahead and starts listing the RFP, the proposal for the engineer. So can we get a consensus on that? Is anybody in disagreement?
Yes, Mayor, I have a question.
Okay.
Councilman Glover. Under the Senate bill that was proposed, introduced by Mamie Locke, it says that prior to removing, relocating, contextualizing, or covering any such publicly owned monument or memorial, the local governing body shall publish notice of such intent in the newspaper having general circulation in the locality. The notice shall specify the time and place of the public hearing at which the interested persons may present their views not less than 30 days after the publication of the notice. I would ask that we start the process of putting in place the public hearing notification so that in tandem with what we're doing with the engineering, we do these simultaneously so that by the time the public hearing is done, we are prepared to take a vote to relocate the monument.
Well, I appreciate your comments, but remember one of the key words in what you just read, and they're parallel built. I cited HB 1537.
Yes, sir.
Is publicly owned. And we need our city attorney to give us a fresh opinion about the ownership, because if you go on and read further in that act, it says that a public body cannot initiate the move of a privately owned monument. So it comes as a package. So I think it would be wise, and it's only two weeks, in fact, if I didn't state it, we need this opinion back at our next meeting. So I think it would be a more thorough process to make sure that we address what's the requirements of the law, what's the timeframe, and the most recent feeling about ownership. I mean, I've got an opinion about ownership, but I'm not an attorney.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Can I ask one other question relating to that?
Sure.
Because I did, I had the same concern, and I spoke to our attorney this week, and based on our conversation, there was a review of ownership that he shared with me, and that it wasn't fully determined, or the parties that needed to come forward to declare the ownership were unable to come forward. Nevertheless, there's still that open question, but at the end of the day, what our attorney indicated to me, that because the other party did not show up, then by default, we will be determined to be the owner of the property. So I was just trying to make sure that I did my homework as well to ensure that we were moving forward appropriately.
Thank you. That's very good, but let's let the attorney share that opinion and his thoughts with all of council, not just with one.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Phil Moody?
Yes, sir. Do you have the floor?
Yes, I think prior to a public hearing, I think the public would like to know in advance of that, the proposed relocation, as you mentioned, also the cost of relocation, disassembling, and re-erecting the monument. You know, we've heard that costs could be substantial. I've heard figures anywhere from, you know, a half a million to $700,000, $800,000. So I think prior to a public hearing, we would also need to know the funding source and the cost. And also, I think it's incumbent upon a broader section of people to determine whether the monument should be taken down, other than four or seven people. Four people, obviously, would be a consensus. Seven members of council. I think any decision to remove any article of history needs to be on a referendum. There are people, as we all know by now, that are people that support it staying where it is, that are people that support moving it. And I respect both lines of thought, but something that's major, I think, belongs on a referendum. And that may come out in the public hearing. I think it's incumbent upon us to hear what the public thinks about that as well.
And I think it's important, because all these points are good, and they're touched on in the act, not only the authority to have a public hearing, but the funding source. So I think it's wise for our city attorney to provide all the council a written path forward, what the current law, the new law provides, the timeframe, and address the matter of ownership. I don't think I'm hearing anybody object to this.
No, no objections, Mr. Mayor, but I do have an additional comment to add to the discussion.
Okay.
I know that some other, thank you, Mayor, some other localities have looked at, while they're making these decisions on whether to remove, relocate, find funding, or find ownership, they're looking to use some type of covering, whether it be a tarp or some kind of fabric covering, since we have deemed that the city of Portsmouth has been the group that has been maintaining, whether it's replacing a fence or painting over vandalism. While we're trying and while we're waiting through a public hearing or through a referendum or whatever the process is going to be, can we look at using some type of covering or tarp in that interim time?
Mayor, that's a good, it may keep the monument safe from being defaced.
Mayor, may I say something?
You may. Let me have the floor, please. Let's add that to the engineering services, because you just don't design those things on the back of the envelope. Was that you, Councilman Moody, that asked for the floor?
Yes, I would be opposed to a tarp. You know, this monument is to honor the dead. It's not to glorify the Confederacy. There's no mark of a Confederate battle flag on it. It's not a statue of a past Confederate general. It's to honor those who've lost their lives in the Civil War. So I don't think covering a tarp, I think, is being extremely disrespectful. And it's not, once again, is to honor the dead. And while we're on that subject, you know, removing history is something I associate with bad government, communist government, fascist government. You know, history, that's why we have a Holocaust museum in Washington, DC. That was a terrible thing. People need to be reminded of it so it can never be repeated again. Here in Portsmouth, we have a library that African Americans had to use during the Gen Pro era. And that library was preserved. It was moved. In fact, I supported using tax dollars to move it to its present location. For a very, very short time, I was on the board. It was a job I couldn't make the meetings. I supported that, because I think it's important that people know what existed, so it can never be repeated again. And these monuments that are being taken down is trying to pretend that something never happened. And I don't think that's a healthy situation for any country, for any state, or for any city. You know, you don't destroy history. History is the good, the bad, and sometimes the ugly. And you don't destroy it.
Excuse me, Mayor. I have a conference, Mayor, please. I have a comment.
Wait a minute. I want to make sure that, I hear you.
Okay.
I want to make sure that those who have not spoken yet have a chance to speak.
Okay.
This is Elizabeth Semus, also.
Okay. Elizabeth, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. I was just going to say that everybody has strong emotional feelings about this issue, one way or another. You asked us for consensus on a path forward, and I was going to say, I think your path forward makes sense. These are very serious decisions we have to make. We need all the facts. And I look forward to the results of, I provide a yes to your question, to get all the information before the public can make a decision and we can make a decision, whatever that may be.
Thank you. Councilman Battle, you haven't said anything. Are you okay with this path forward?
Yes.
Okay. Councilman?
Well, first of all, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I don't, because of the diversity of our council, the statue means different, has different meanings. And if we're going to get into what it means to us, then, you know, it means differently to the African Americans than it would the Europeans, you know, the Americans. White... to the African Americans than it would the Europeans, you know, the Americans, white American folk. So, and we both have our strong belief about it, so I think when we step into that gate, we're stepping into somewhere that we don't really need to go. We just need to, as the letterman said, go forward with the motion that you made.
Nate, you haven't had a chance to speak yet.
Yes, and I agree with what you said about getting the information from our attorney, because until we legally know what can and can't be done, I don't think we can have a public hearing until, just like you said, what's in the legislation about funding and everything else. So I don't think any decision can be made until we're advised legally what we can and can't be done.
All right. I think everybody's had a chance to speak. I'll come back to Councilman Glover.
Okay, sir. So first of all, I do want to say that I believe everybody on this council respects the dead, those who have served in any capacity. But let me be very clear. On that statue, it says the Confederate dead. So it does identify what dead is honoring. In addition to that, in the 1940s, there was an issue with the monument. Some of my council colleagues may not know that. The issue with the monument came up on a referendum. In the 1940s, I doubt that African Americans had the franchise and were able to vote against that monument. Fast forward to 2020, and what we have seen in our country, I have participated this week and the last seven days in several diverse protests. But the one that touched me the most was the one I participated in this Sunday morning. A 10-year-old little white girl named Adriana La Monica saw what happened to Mr. Floyd in Minneapolis, and it touched her so profoundly that she told her mother she needed to organize a march against injustice. I participated in that march against injustice this Sunday morning with all of those young people, black, white, all races and all creed. And I can tell you that it is time for the city of Portsmouth to face itself on the right side of history. We can continue on in this manner, or we can be bold in our leadership. Or we can let our citizens in our city know that to relocate this monument representing the Confederate dead is an appropriate response, and it is not desecration. It is the respect that it is due. So that's my position, and that is what I intend and I expect us to do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. It sounds like we have a consensus to move forward. Just to make sure that everybody understands, this is not a new conversation. There was never a referendum. It's been discussed five times. The most recent was in the 1950s, when the local newspaper headline said, "To move or not be moved." It goes back as early as 1927 discussion. So it has been discussed by the public five times. In fact, the city manager came up with an estimate, and this is one of the discussions back in the 40s, to move the monument would have cost $2,500 then. And that was to move it to City Park. So we have a clear path forward, and Dr. Patton and Mr. Ashby, put this on a fast track so you can get the information, the ordinance back next week, start the RFP, and give us a written report, even if it's not in final form, Mr. Ashby, at our next meeting. All right. Any other items submitted by council? I think our next meeting will be in the council chamber. Our city manager and her team are working on how to reopen the building. It may not be in the same geographic layout that we're used to, as we are still required to practice social distancing. With that, we'll adjourn this meeting, and I thank all for your participation. And again, please remember the family and the person of George Floyd. In rest of our hearts and minds. This meeting is adjourned.